Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Board of Selectance meeting for Tuesday, February 25th, 2014. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with Mass General laws, I have to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the Board of Selectance office and also by East Long Meadow Cable Access. And I have to ask if anyone in the audience is recording the meeting. Seeing no one, we can proceed. Our first appointment is our Police Chief, Douglas Melas.
Hello, sir.
Oh dear. You know what?
I'll get it later.
All right, we've got a couple items that we have to deal with tonight, first being another one of those prescription drug take-back days.
Yes, we get that slated for Saturday, April 26th with DEA. All our paperwork is done.
And it's up to snuff. We already have the approval of waiver from DEP. And that should run from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. They've been doing it now for the last two years, twice a year, so it's been very successful. Just want to strongly suggest that our residents, yesterday myself, Sergeant Manley, and Sergeant DeLazio took part in that opiate seminar up at Greenfield Community College. And it was really stress there as well that our seniors in town really keep track of what prescription drugs they have, that they no longer use or need, in the event that they don't fall into the wrong hands, that this is a golden opportunity to rid those drugs from their house in a safe, safe manner. So, welcome them to come by, 10 to 2 at the police station.
Okay, thanks. And I know you've gotten like 100 pounds' worth of medications at least in the past.
We do at least 100 every collection we have. It's been very successful.
100 pounds?
Yes.
That's amazing.
I mean, it contains, the containers are in there too. We don't separate or throw everything into a cardboard box.
All right. And the second item is you had a facilities inspection.
Yes, the state office, the Bureau of Environmental Health and Community Sanitation Program came by in late December. The report that you have shows that there are no violations were noted. However, as they have done in previous years, they noted potential problems. Last January of '13, I spoke with Bruce Fenney from the DPW from charge of the public facilities. And they had a tecton architect come in and look at the issues that were being raised. Our fear was that if they start to make repairs to these cells, it's going to be found that the cells would not be in compliance because they're smaller than what today's specifications are. Apparently, that is not an issue. They said, yeah, you could repair them. The estimate for the repairs is $460,000 some odd thousand.
Wow.
$468,480. You know, there's talk about making one of the mail cells into a handicap, oversized cell. I've had conversation with Sheriff Ash in the efforts to regionalize a lockup, as well as other police departments in the area. Rather than put that kind of money into those cells, which might have a life of only a few more years if the regional lockup facility goes forward, I think it's best. We monitor, I have a couple officers here, and I think they will attest to it as well. When we have a suicide threat that we have in custody, we have someone outside the cell watching them the whole time that they're in custody until they're either taken to court or they're released on bail. So, I'm not going to say it, but I certainly hope that we don't have any attempts.
Right, right.
We're doing the best we can with, it's almost a 40-year-old facility now.
Okay, very good. I think that's it. Unless you've got one more thing.
The academy. The recruit is due to graduate June 27th. He's doing quite well. He's in week three. He's been made a squad leader. And then the attestation letter, I'm unable to make that regional 911 meet on Thursday. I think Nick might have that form for the board to sign off on for that regional, looking at the 911 dispatch. And Officer Scott Saffret will be retiring this Friday, February 28th. He was hired as a police officer on February 3rd, 1975, and will have completed over 39 years of service to the town of East Long Meadow. I just want to wish Scott along and healthy retirement and all the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our wishes as well.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, I could ask the board to consider whether or not it agrees now to go forward with that attestation letter for the regional dispatch program that's being proposed with Long Meadow as that lead community.
And this is just entering us into the process, if you will, as opposed to...
No commitments.
It's not committing us to anything, right?
Is that right?
Yes.
I thought once we signed it, we were in, judging from when we have to visit night and facility.
I was under the impression that we sign this saying that we want to participate in the next phase, but it does not in any way, shape, or form mandate us to go forward.
Is there a motion to move forward and sign the attestation letter for partnering municipalities?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I figured you'd both say second also. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
You're excused.
W T 40.
Thank you.
Good day.
Our next appointment is our Fire Chief. How are you, sir?
Very well.
All right.
I'll let you do the introductions.
Yep.
Sal Manzi.
And as you said, this is Sal Manzi from Goodwill Industries. I had come before the board back in January in reference to Goodwill's interest to put a collection container at the fire station. And the board had some questions. Sal offered to come right here and speak directly to the board, answer their questions, and hopefully everybody. The one thing that, actually, we just spoke beforehand, is the planning board's rules about putting it in parking space is pretty strict. We won't be able to do that. So, in discussion with Sal, we have a location in the back that's not a parking space. It's still a paved area. The difference is, is visibility won't be as good, but I'll let him explain his needs and how they market it, and we'll go from there.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks for having me here today.
Our pleasure.
Goodwill Industries is based in Springfield. We're a franchise. Our territory is the Pioneer Valley. Our average donor is female, age 25 to 40. And our closest stores, our closest donation center to East Long Meadow is Parker Street and Sumner Avenue. And when we do our polls, our exit polls, 40% of our donations from Parker Street come from East Long Meadow and 15% from Sumner Avenue. And right now is a tough time of the year for donations. They drive our stores. We don't get anything, any monetary donations. Everything is textiles and housewares. And we considered opening up a man donation center in a storefront, but there's overhead associated with that. Our mission is to give people with special needs jobs, and our mission comes first and foremost. I just got a job hour reduction because our stores aren't cutting it. So, it's my job to try to find places that will be beneficial to us and the community. And East Long Meadow being as generous as it's been in the past is a great place to start. Our unmanned bins have been around the, we don't do too many of these because a lot of problems do arise with the unmanned bins. We've tried them in downtown Springfield. We've tried them in West Springfield and around the college campuses, and you can only imagine what the results are. Usually, it's usually one person that runs it for everybody. But in doing our research, finding municipal property tends to be the best result. We got this study from Goodwill International, which oversees our agency. And doing our homework here, the fire station or the police station, the police station is the first place I contacted, referred me to Chief Morris Sepp, was an ideal fit. And what we wanted to do was propose, I could have it to you for tomorrow, but we wanted to propose something a week-to-week basis, a bin in the back. We'd like to partner with the fire department, any programs they support. We could do that in our store, so long as it's not a conflict of interest, such as a food drive, food pantry, or so on. And we would advertise this on our Facebook, on our website, and in our stores. And we would keep it clean. It would be visited by our personnel at least twice a day, be visited on the weekends, and you'd have two people on call.
Okay. Then my first question is, how often would it be tended to?
Is that twice a day or twice a week?
Twice a day, morning and evening.
Okay.
Somebody would come up to...
Myself, I'm the primary. I live right over the line in Springfield. Our district manager and our president, he's going to be an emergency contact, as will the vice president, plus the two store managers at Parker and Sumner. We'd have plenty of numbers to call if there's an event of an emergency. But based on the fact that it's going to be behind a building, it's only going to be for those who actually are targeted by our emails and our Facebook posts. So, we'd have to get creative.
To solicit the donation?
Yes. So, your average person driving through isn't going to see it, which in a way is good because it's not going to collect garbage if people, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Sure.
So, that answered a little bit of a question I had about people vandalizing. Do we have cameras back there? And so, if someone...
The location where that would be, we don't. We talked about actually with IT installing a couple more. We needed that last sweep, and we were, we held off at that point. I don't think it's, we have the, we have the space on our server, so to put it up there, if Ryan's got the camera, we can put it up. We have cameras that come into the parking lot. We have cameras on the rear building, which is our communications equipment.
So, if there were to be an issue, it would be a possibility.
We'd catch something, yeah.
But it does sound to me like if it's not going to be in plain sight, then folks aren't going to know about it.
That's right.
If I might say, you know, my first career was in human services. Worked at Sunshine Village for many years, finding people with disabilities jobs. So, I have the utmost respect for your organization and what you do.
Thank you so much.
I just want to make it clear that I recognize what you do as an organization, and I think it's fabulous.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Any questions?
Well, may I answer the questions? Because my main thing, one quick question is, if for any reason we should decide that we no longer want to participate, how long does it take for you to remove the item?
I can't say that day, but like I said, I'd like to visit with other chiefs.
Not that I anticipated to do it, but just...
No, 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 that's your right. And I want, you guys are doing me a favor. I'd like to visit this on a week-to-week basis via email. If you don't want it, even if you don't like the color, you don't like, it's casting a shadow on. So, any reason you don't want it there, it will be removed as soon as possible.
Okay, good.
Okay, great.
So, I mean, I really appreciate, this is just, we want to test this market, and this is step one of getting a donation center in the area.
Okay.
Okay.
Excellent.
Sounds good.
Well, I think it's great. I support it.
Now, Nick, is there something we have to go on? Because I know, I don't think we did in the past, we were waiting for questions to be answered.
I think that's at the discretion of the board.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept the Goodwill Industry container at the fire station.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I think it's a great idea.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great.
Great. And good luck.
Very much.
Sure will be.
Sir, thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Very nice meeting you. Thank you for coming in and answering those questions. Appreciate it.
All right, all right, Chief. Next, you have some staffing needs coming up.
Staffing needs, yes. With firefighter Gary Severio retiring July, I'd like to begin the process. It's a several-month process, as you can see by the timeline on the letter I sent in. Post it in-house, give the firefighters, the call firefighters, an opportunity to, you know, put their resume together, submit their resume. And then, depending on the number, if it was, you know, more than three or four, like last time, we would do the same type of interview in-house with the area chiefs, knock it down. If it's a three or four number, I think we could probably eliminate that and just meet directly with the board at a convenient, regular meeting night, and conducting interviews like we did last time, and choose the person. My whole reason for doing this, I know Gary's not retiring until July 25th, but the academy slots with their, the way they're working right now, it's minimum six months out. The person that could actually start working, but it's better to get him into the academy sooner than later.
Right.
If we wait too long, if we don't actually pick this person until July, he's not going to start the academy until January. And I've been to classes in the fire academy in January. It's brutal. So, the sooner we can get him in, get him in the schedule system at the fire academy would be a great help to us and him.
Well, plus, we don't want to be unfortunately with the police department. It seems like we've been running in arrears for years trying to replace people who are leaving.
Catch up, right, catch up.
And we attempted to be proactive, which unfortunately didn't work out at one point.
Right.
But if we can do that, you know, if we can do that here, it's always good to have somebody to come in.
Right, and it's ready to go.
Yep.
Great. Quick question?
Yep.
Through the chair. Has it been our practice to have them hired first before, what's the timeline between hiring and getting them to the academy? Can it be like within a month, or does it have to be, I know you said six months earlier?
The academy, years ago, the academy used to, the chiefs from the departments could call up and say, "I'm hiring somebody in July. I want a slot." That doesn't work anymore. They need to actually take the physical, the pre-employment physical for a firefighter, through the state. It's a state mandated physical. They have to, what they do is the physical agility test. When they pass that, they bring that paperwork to the fire academy, and the fire academy creates a slot for them.
So, they can actually be working for us before they pass the academy?
Yes, because they're already trained firefighters, because everybody from our department...
That's right.
Comes from the call department.
All right.
A little different than Springfield, or Long Meadow, or Wilbraham.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yep.
Now, do we need a formal permission from us to begin this process?
The board has taken such forms of process.
Okay, yes. I'd like to make a motion to allow the Fire Chief to begin the process of selecting or finding a candidate to replace firefighter Severio.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is your deputy.
Deputy. I took the time to complete a job description, trying to, you know, fine-tune exactly what Steve's done and the deputy before him have done. And some of the stuff's changed over the years. It's from the early '90s when Richie first became the deputy chief, and as Steve became deputy chief. The responsibilities of the fire department have increased, like the police department, like most of the departments within the town. So, just going through listing it, it proves that whoever the shift captain is, doesn't really prove it, but it shows that the shift captain is actually doing the same job as who the deputy chief should be. As the letter says, Sean was appointed the shift officer, shift captain, as per the agreement, the contract agreement where the chief picks him. Sean's been the acting captain for several years now. Steve's out, he steps up, and he's been doing it. Steve retired in January. He's been doing a great job. Some of the paperwork he had never done before, but now he's actually taken it, he's modified it a little bit, streamlined it. He's, he's an aggressive guy. You're smiling, but you know, Sean's a very aggressive guy. He gets the job done.
In a good way.
In a good way, in a very good way. And the guys, when they come in in the morning, it's pretty simple. They know what they need to do, and it gets done. So, it's my, it's my belief that, again, this position should be the same, the shift officer and the deputy chief should be wanting the same. And with that, I'm asking the board, you know, as per the rules and regulations, I would appoint Sean with the board's permission.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve firefighter Manhattan as deputy chief, and he'll be deputy chief and shift captain?
Yep.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
How many deputies she, excuse me, deputies do you have?
One.
And did you, this is your priority? Your top person?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
In the future, along these same lines, what I'd like to do is work with the liaison, if it changes next April, you know, this coming April, but work with the liaison to reword the rules and regulations so that the contract, when it comes up again, and the rules and regulations all match. Right now, there's, the rules and regulations are extremely outdated, so we need to get those back in line again. So, just to let you know, that'll be coming.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good.
Great.
Next is, you have various and sundry mechanics.
Yes, yes. Sean was the mechanic. He stepped up as the shift captain during the day, so I needed to replace him as mechanic. Theoretically, he could stay. He'd probably like that, but his responsibilities are more, more increased now. And it's time for somebody else to step up and, you know, take on more responsibilities. My whole, my whole thrust is to try and make sure that there's somebody behind me ready to go when I want to go. And if everybody stays down and it's the same person, and Sean's probably going to retire before me, that's his plan. Sean's got five or six years left. I've got at least 10. So, I need people to be ready to go, take on responsibility. And Ed's, Ed's the kind of guy, he's been very thorough, and he's consistently shown that his attention to detail has helped the department constantly. He's my public and fire life safety educator who's taken that responsibility since he's been hired. He's been trained. He does the classrooms, and this wouldn't affect any of that right now. So, it's a position that he gets $700 stipend for a year, or $75 a year. So, it's not a, it's not a windfall by any means. So...
If I remember correctly, that saves you from having outside people do any minor repairs and...
Minor tests, right, minor tests. We take care of a lot of the small engines that we have. We have incredible, each truck's got the chainsaws, it has the small generators, it has the fans. We do all of that. Any light bulb work on the fire trucks, we take care of. Minor, minor repairs to a battery, we can change the batteries on a fire truck. We do stuff like that. The minute you get into any of the major components, you need to be emergency vehicle certified to start doing that kind of work. And that's unfortunately, when, as soon as you say that, the labor rate goes from Ed doing it at no cost to...
Yes.
So, it's kind of scary. And there's a lot of training involved, and the certificates that are involved in those are huge. So, that's something we have to do. But this person, our mechanic, is also the person who coordinates all of that and tracks all of that and records it all, which is a pretty good, pretty big responsibility.
All right.
Can I ask just a quick question?
Sure.
So, you have two mechanics. Judging from the next one that's...
I think that's a typo. I think on Bill Hool's, you've got him listed as mechanic, when I think you want him listed as training officer.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, then that makes, okay, got it. No, that's okay. All right, so that answers that question.
Unless you're considering him a personnel mechanic, then he'd be...
Yeah, well, yep.
Any further questions?
No.
I'd like to make a motion to allow the fire department to accept Ed McCannlish as the mechanic for the fire department.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Next.
Training officer.
With the deputy retiring.
It's like dominoes, right?
Yeah, it is, it is. Bill has actually been working towards his fire instructor degree, or certification. One of his last steps is the class he's taken now. His goal is to become fire officer one and fire instructor one. He's finished the classroom portions of the instructor. He's finishing, there's actually a group of firefighters, some of them out of finishing this weekend at the fire station. It's been a five-week process. Bill is, and he's looking to go forward onto fire instructor two. The only other person I have in the department that's fire instructor besides myself would be Ben, who does a lot of work at the fire academy. But Ben's responsibilities as fire inspector don't lend him to do both jobs and do both jobs well. Ben's still available. He does a lot of training with us, but when it comes to creating the schedule, doing the actual record-keeping of it, it's extremely difficult. There's no, he wouldn't be able to do both. And I need Ben as the fire inspector, so.
Okay.
Did you tell him that?
Did I tell Ben that? Yes, I did. I did. I had the conversation with Ben before it. Because Ben works for the fire academy, and I just, I wanted to bounce it off him.
Okay, good.
I guess I told it to him. I didn't bounce it off him. I told him that I need you where you are.
As long as it's been communicated, yeah.
And he really likes being the inspector. He's doing a great job.
Okay, all right.
Okay. I'd like to make a proposal motion to accept Bill Hool as training officer for the fire department.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you.
And last but not least, you had a...
This is a little silly one.
Well, it's not silly, but it's unusual. It's unusual. Go ahead.
It's been in our, we have a petty cash box that gets locked up every night. I say most of the time it's locked up because we never go in petty cash unless we have to go to the post office. But when I think Sean did, when he, Sean's a very organized person. And he, when he saw this ring in there with this note and said, "What are we doing with this thing?" And I says, "You know what? Let's find out." I called...
If I may interrupt, what we're speaking about, for those who don't know, is back in 2005, during the muscular dystrophy boot drive, someone left their wedding ring in the boot, when they, I guess, when they made a donation. So, the wedding ring has been...
It slipped off their finger.
Yeah, it slipped off their finger, or they lost it in some manner, yeah, or in their pocket, and...
It may have been a donation.
There you go. It could have been an ex-wedding ring.
Yeah, it could have been. Let's not go there, though, okay?
But anyways...
It is, it is a very small ring. I mean, it's not a super-thick ring, but it is a gold ring. I think it's 21 karat inside, is that right?
Nine years, I think the statute eliminates it.
And Chief Wallace, at the time, actually advertised, put it in a reminder, lost ring. Hopefully, somebody would have came forward if it was really a memento that they, you know, something they cared about.
If they rather a reminder.
Right. And they never, but anyways, it's been there. I spoke with council, and what I would like to do is have somebody from the association sell it and that, give that money right to the MDA. It's not the fire department's ring. It's not the association's ring. It's, you know...
Did you bring it with you?
I did not bring it with me. You can see it at the fire station.
I will, I'll come up with it.
Take a picture of it. If you don't mind humoring me, since we're putting this out, I don't, you know, I'm sure there's probably fewer people who watch, nothing personal done, who watch Elcat, than, than read the reminder. But if you've had it nine years, if you could hold off maybe a month?
Yep.
And that way, if someone happens to see this?
Absolutely.
And, you know, it strikes a bell, and if maybe a month from now, if no one's claimed it, then, you know...
Right. There is, there is a slight description on the ring, so if somebody lost the ring and they come forward and they can identify it, I guess we can do that.
But that said, I won't go and see it until after a month then.
I can actually talk to the reminder again and see if they can put just a little blurb in.
Okay.
As a community service, yeah.
Sort of like a last, last chance before it's, yeah.
Yeah, last chance you have.
Okay, great.
Excellent.
Great.
I think that's it.
That's it.
Very good.
I know last meeting that I wasn't at, you guys originally wanted me to stay for the contract. Did you want me to, and I was out of town at a conference.
Sure.
Do you want me to stay for tonight, or do you want, because there's such, so much on the agenda?
Yeah.
I saw the agenda.
I don't know if we're going to get a lighter agenda. It's...
Yeah. I'll tell you what, no, we'll discuss it, and I'll get back to you. That way, you don't have to stay.
Okay, tonight I can, okay.
Because I think I know what we had discussed, so...
Right, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
All right, next. Our town accountant, who, considering you have water and Kleenex, I'm not shaking your hand.
Oh, you can be talking from over there.
Shaking.
How are you?
Fist bump.
All right, we've got a number of items tonight, the first being Scantic Valley Regional Health Trust. See, you've got the management letter and the financial statement.
Yep. The Scantic Valley Regional Health Trust has done very, very well, especially in the last couple of years. And the financial statements show, I'll just summarize, that our claims during fiscal year '13 dropped 1.3 million. So, claims are going down, but assets are remaining the same. So, that means our fund balance went up. Very, very good thing. So, you might ask why claims went down 1.3 million to the five towns, and that is primarily due to East Long Meadow moving, us moving, retirees to Medicare, which they qualified last year, and a few other factors. So, those are all positive.
Keep going.
Which, in the end, resulted in Scantic Valley Regional Trust voting in, leveled claims for next fiscal year, which I think, in this day and age, is almost unheard of. So, that's great. That will reduce the town of East Long Meadows' projected health insurance costs for next year. We budgeted, we budgeted in a 6% increase for last year. And however, with, with the rates being even, you would think that would come down. However, we have seen a increase in enrollments of about 27 folks coming in, mixed between single plans and family plans. And that's due to a number of factors internally. People retiring, people losing their jobs, spouses losing their jobs and so on. So, in the end, for next year, as of right... In the end, for next year, as of right now, we're seeing about $100,000 savings over the 5.2 million that we projected, so we're watching it very closely, our enrollments, we're not sure where it's going to go in the next couple of years, but it's all good except for the fact that we had an increase, and so next year's projected increase won't be as much as we thought maybe it would be.
Okay. So, let's see, so we've got the management letter, the financial statements, the approved rates?
The rates, yeah, we voted on the rates, and they're stable.
Okay. And then next item is, as far as plan design, this is talking for consideration, obviously we've been in negotiations with appropriations, and everyone's problem is money, lack thereof, and appropriations has made some suggestions as far as reforming the healthcare in a couple ways, and I was at the meeting last week, and what they proposed something, I counter-proposed something, so I guess our objective is to entertain into negotiations on possible change, but we don't have, we don't know what that change may be.
Mm-hmm.
In other words, we're not prepared to say it's going to be, you know, this, this, or this, or anything, it's just a matter of, you know, we're willing to talk, and to see what we can do, that's the least, it's a fine line of the most beneficial for the town, but the least harmful to the employees, so we're going to try to, you know, we're going to look at our options and then go from there, and then, you know, obviously, we will, if it's voted on tonight to enter into this, then we will enter into negotiations and get input from union leaders from town and see where, see what we can do. Okay. So, to that end, I guess we should ask for a vote to engage in, at least engage in discussions, so I'd like to make a motion to engage in discussions to possibly change the health insurance guidelines in the town.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
All right. The next item is...
Just to follow up with that, the board, now, the next step for the board would be to consider what it would propose to the collective bargaining units for those changes, and I believe I'd provided timelines to the board and had made notification prior to this that the board would be considering this vote. The notification next, to go out to the insurance advisory committee, by the statute must include what the proposal will be, so that the soonest the board could send that notice out and get the process going for negotiations would be once the board has an idea of what the proposal will be. Long way of saying that the sooner the board can make that decision, the better it will be as far as the timeline goes, because there are minimum requirements, we're also looking at trying to prepare information for open enrollment period, which begins May 1st, so ideally, and really by necessity, changes will need to be proposed, negotiated, and agreed to sometime by mid-April, and that's a somewhat aggressive schedule. I would propose that at the next meeting, the board has options before, and I would work with Mr. Calianto on that, to have those before the board, and then make a decision as to what, if you're prepared to at that time, to send something out.
Our next meeting is next week.
Yes.
The next board meeting is...
The week after today.
Is a week from today, however, it's at an unusual time for the board, it's at 9:00 a.m., so it will be in the hearing room in Town Hall, and that was a decision that's not affected by any of this discussion, by necessity, for the board.
Okay.
It's 9:00 a.m.?
9:00 a.m. in the hearing room in Town Hall, 9:00 a.m. on the 4th of March, Tuesday the 4th.
Is that possible, we'll get all that done in a week?
We'll do our level best.
Okay.
Okay, and the next item, another thing that they brought up was the consideration of elected officials' coverage, or lack thereof, so I don't know if you want to follow up on that, I forgot what that would save. Okay. Okay, all right. So, that's something else we can take into consideration to cut into our vast benefit package that we have?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, pardon interruption, but in speaking with Labor Council as well this afternoon, I believe that Attorney Taylor, who will be here a little later this evening, is looking into and believes that it is the Board of Selectmen's prerogative to change that ruling, so that if the town makes coverage available, or takes away coverage, if you will, from elected officials, that is something that the board could decide on, that's what she believes it is, she's looking up the statute. There was a question about whether or not it would affect retirees, because there are some retired elected officials that are part of that pool, and she wasn't 100%, but believes that they may be grandfathered, so she may have information this evening.
That's 25 grand for retirees.
Okay. All righty. The next item is the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund and the potential of a warrant article, and once again, that was something that we had discussed last week in the appropriations meeting when we were going through the budgets, and for the people who haven't seen any of those meetings, the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund is something that Scanlon and Associates have recommended for six or seven years during their, I believe, during their audit report of the town, and it's been something that's been an issue of somewhat of contention, and what basically, I believe, what will happen is, in a perfect world, either our board will propose a warrant item requesting the adoption of a Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, and the DPW will go along with us, or our board, or they'll propose it, or if they don't, and we, regardless of which, I know there's a taxpayer out there who is ready to get a petition warrant article in there if we don't do it. So, my thought is, I think, and this is just my opinion, obviously, I'm looking for input from the board, because I know Slavik Thorpe was there last week, but Slavik Bronski wasn't. I think it looks more unified for us to put this forward as opposed to a towns person, and also would be more unified to have everyone on the same page, but that's just my theory, so feel free to, you know, give me your input, because I would appreciate it.
Well, it's something that our auditors have been asking us to do. My concern was that we, you know, make sure we communicate with those affected, and I know that we've done that, you know, whether we agree or disagree is another conversation, but I believe we've done due diligence as a board to make sure we open communications and try to discuss, you know, the reasons why, and so I think that, you know, all involved have had the opportunity to communicate their concerns. In the end, this is a recommendation that we are being strongly advised to follow, and so I would support moving forward, and agree that we should not, you know, as a board, we should, in a unified manner, present the article.
Again, anything you'd like to add?
Well, essentially, we were saying that this is something that we need to do, and it's for the betterment of the town, so...
Okay. Now, is this something, if we took a vote right now, to, I mean, do we have to? Because one thing I want to do is, obviously, the deadline for a petition warrant article is Monday, the 3rd, so if we give our blessing now, then that would preclude any, you know, petitioned articles, so is that, do we have to do a formal vote on that, or is it just the fact that we're all in agreement, does that suffice, and that we're stating that we will put it on the warrant?
The board, previous additions, if you will, of the board have voted on the articles to be placed on a warrant, whether it's annual town meeting, special town meeting, and there have been traditionally two votes taken. First is whether or not the board agrees to sponsor a given article, and then a second vote, whether it's at that same meeting or at a subsequent time, whether or not the board will support the article as a board, as a full board at that town meeting.
Okay.
So, I think following the board's procedures, you don't necessarily have to do them all at once, and the need here to take away the idea that a petitioned article would have to come in, I think a vote would take away that uncertainty.
Okay. Okay, then in that case, like you said, we don't have the vote that we individually support this, although it sounds like we do, but I would like to make a motion for that the board will put forth a warrant item regarding establishing a Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund at the annual town meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
This isn't necessarily the language we're going to use, or is it...
That's the language that I came up with my research, and is primarily identified in the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund DOR guideline. However, as we always do, I would have our council...
Yes.
You know, we should make sure it's muster...
I think so, yeah, okay, and I'm good with that.
Yeah, we're just, we're voting on the process and the final product.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One question too during discussion is, should another board, say the Board of Public Works specifically, decide that they would want to be the sponsor of the article, would the board then allow for that?
Yes.
And relinquish that?
I would say yes as well. You mean to co-sponsor or sponsor it on their own, or we would just support them?
Yes.
Doesn't make a difference how it gets there.
Right.
Yeah, but ultimately, since it's their fund, if they wanted to actually, you know, be the ones to present the article, that would even be better, but, you know...
Then the purpose of this vote, the main purpose is to ensure that it will be on the warrant.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay, next item.
Follow-up question to that, excuse me, so there was the mechanism about transferring of funds, this is the establishment for the Water and Sewer, I don't have the language in front of me, but there was also discussion about the costs and the $100,000. Will that require an additional warrant article? How does that get done?
Well, I think for this, if I 15 budget, if there can be an agreement, I think the best case would be if there was an agreement, and in the end, cost allocation to, from the general fund, health insurance, retirement, so on, to the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds would have to be a written agreement between the Board of Selectmen and the Department of Public Works.
Right.
So, I think that at minimum, if we could get just agreement that what we're proposing in the appropriations committee budget is for the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds to cover only health insurance for fiscal year 15, and that's about $100,000.
Yep.
And that also is backed up in the bylaws, by the way. That would be great.
Yeah.
And then, you know, then we can work on a formal agreement.
Yeah, because I think that was the original intent, was that we knew that that's what appropriations was looking for, but we didn't want to go in and start, at least, you know, in the interim, start taking, you know, everything that theory we're entitled to, but, so, you know...
Mr. Chairman, I do have a follow-up to the accountant, is the proposed transfer, Mr. Calianto talks about an agreement between the two boards, but will this be a part of the budget that's presented at the annual town meeting? Will this be a separate warrant article that will need to be discussed? Will it be something that people will be able to stand up and ask a question like they do on any of the other budget line items?
So, the preferred method would be if, you know, everyone agrees, then in the motion, the budget motion itself, we would ask for a transfer from the Water and Sewer Funds into the general fund to cover that cost, so that the incoming funds transfers from solid waste, like we always do, kindergarten revolving fund, animal control fund, and in this case, would be part of the motion to transfer the funds for health insurance into the general fund. So, if we have agreement on that, and there's no surprises, I think that would be the best case. And we did this about three years ago.
Okay. Just need one to be clear.
So, I guess I plan on, when I'm going through the motions and preparing them, to include that by recommendation of the appropriations committee.
Okay, so that's one, through the chair? So, that's one way, what would be another way?
Well, going forward, you mean indirect cost allocation? Well, I have a spreadsheet showing potentially what we could in the future work on, retirement, you know, departmental costs where the effort is put into Water and Sewer, in other words, my department cuts bills, pays payroll, da-da-da, so IT does the same, you know, you really have to look at that and come up with an agreement.
But the first one that you said is the cleaner way to do it.
Yeah, I think the first step is that.
Yep.
And then over the years, maybe a three-year period, we can work together to try to allocate, identify those costs, and see what is fair and what's not fair.
Okay. Very good. Next is celebrations and operations budget.
Yeah, it's good suggestions coming from the appropriations committee and departments to try to change up the budgets a little so they're a little more streamlined. For instance, we have some utility costs right now that are shown in the celebrations account, it's only $1,500, but really, all utility costs should be shown in the DPW's utility budget, so we would like to transfer those costs over to the DPW utility account. And we have another one, Veterans Day celebration, I think it's about $1,000, $1,200 in the celebrations account, it was suggested that we move that $1,200, I hope I'm saying the right number here, into the veterans' benefits budget, so it's all identified. Then there's the operations account, the operations account's been around for years and years and years.
The junk drawer.
Yeah, it's a funky little budget that includes expenses of copiers and printing and telephone charges.
Majority of it's telephone.
Most, majority is telephone, and it surpluses every year at about $15,000 to $20,000. So, we would like to take those costs and allocate them to the specific departments. So, the telephone costs, I think in my mind would be to Ryan, to the IT department, if he accepts it, and if not, to the DPW utility account, but Ryan manages it.
Yes, he does.
So, I'm going to type up a little summary page, suggestions on where those costs, where I think we're suggesting they go to you, and it'll clean up that operations budget, which is always kind of in question, and reallocate those.
Right, and you generally budget around $30,000 every year, but only spend 15, so it'll be a cleaner budget as well.
Correct. Yes, it will be, yes.
Great. Next is council on aging revolving fund.
Council on Aging Revolving Fund was established a few years ago by Carolyn Brennan in order to, I'm going to sneeze, but, provide services to the elderly, and one of the biggest services is providing driving services to the elderly, amongst other services that are contained in this revolving fund. Now, every town meeting, according to law, we have to identify the fund, what the services will be, and what the maximum expenditure the town will allow to come out of this fund. Since it was initiated a few years ago, we weren't really sure what was going to max out, so we voted $100,000. We had this problem last year where the actual figures shown at the bottom of the chart show that we did max out in May over $100,000, but we took action, which is suggested by the auditors, that at least we address this, because if we didn't address it, by law, we would have to terminate the program, which would be very, I think for you folks and Carolyn Brennan, unappreciated of that.
Yes, it'd be a high price to pay.
Yes, so we're finding that, again, it's probably going to max out over $100,000 in May, so we'll have May and June, which could be problematic if we don't take action. I don't think it's a big issue, it's not a taxpayer-affected account, it's charges that are charged by the users, okay, which are primarily elderly in the area. Okay, which are primarily elderly in the area. I want to bring it forward and try to get in on a warrant to amend the $100,000 that was voted in May up to, you know, I'm projecting $110,000, maybe we want to go a little higher than that so we don't interrupt the services, yeah. So what I would say is, I'm going to propose that we have a revision to the article at the May town, last May town meeting, to increase the MAC expenditure for fiscal year 14 by maybe $20,000. And I think that'll cover us there. And then, the COA revolving fund for fiscal year 15-
Would be $100,000.
Yeah, it might even be more than that, because it's growing, the program is growing.
And to jump ahead to one of our items farther down, I believe, and I may be wrong, but that item that you want to do a town meeting would require a special town meeting for this year's at the beginning of the regular town meeting? Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm not really sure about that.
Have we discussed that?
Well, that was a suggestion that was talked about, is it's a current fiscal year issue, and whether, I think the question is whether or not a vote at the annual town meeting would apply-
Apply retroactively.
Would apply, I guess, immediately, in this case, as opposed to a special town meeting. And if we're doing this through the chairman, my question to the accountant would be, if we're doing this in October for the remainder of the fiscal year, would it apply right away? And if that's the case, should we do it that same way? Does the fact that it's an annual town meeting and includes a warrant article for the current fiscal year, does that make a difference?
You know, I'm not sure.
We can ask Jim Donahue.
Yeah, I think that might be a question for Jim Donahue and also moderator Jim Shields. It's a good question. We're kind of going on new ground here, so.
Yeah, it makes sense, because the annual town meeting is to set policy for July 1st of 2014, and to take this into consideration then, is, you know, you're going back in time, if you will, so.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah. Okay, follow-up on that, yes?
Tom, the overage from last year, because you said it started going over in May, so from May to December, you don't have those numbers, because that's closed now.
The COA revolving fund?
Yeah. I just think you should be able to nail that number, it shouldn't be a question.
Well, the actual, FY, yeah, my projections for fiscal year 14 on the top part of the chart-
Right.
Are based on the actuals on the bottom half of the chart. So I think what you're asking me, Angela, is how much we maxed out in expenditures.
Right.
And we maxed out expenditures at $116,000, that would be-
$116,000, $170,000.
Yeah, I see that, yeah.
So, you know, it's tough to say right now-
Still.
Because it's so new, the program's only two years and it's growing. But we know, we know it's very popular, we know.
And it's going to grow.
It's going to grow.
Yeah, and you think that if we go for the 20 for the current fiscal year, it should cover us till the end of the year?
Carolyn and I are talking and looking at-
Well, you'll come up with a number then.
I think 20 minimum, and it might be higher.
Okay.
Because I was going to say, you don't want to keep going back.
Yeah, that would be, right, right.
So get it done. Yeah, you heard me.
Next item is the budget process questions.
Oh, when, Tom, just an accounting thing, when there is, say like you have somebody that retires during the year, and they're at the higher end of their scale, and then you hire somebody at the lower end, that excess goes right back to-
Free cash.
Free cash. Do we get, is there any way possible that we can get a report of that? And the other question that I have is, should that budget be reduced by that amount, or do you still continue at the same amount? The same budgeted amount, and then you have extra.
Okay. As we operate right now, the budget that was approved at town meeting is the bottom-line budget, and so department heads work on the bottom-line budget, so if they have a reduction in personal services accounts, can it be used in the other part of the budget? It can't. In other words, if they needed supplies and they had a $10,000 savings because of retirement, they could, and I would, you know, make sure everybody knew about it, that they were going to use it for supplies in the operating budget lines, as long as the bottom line doesn't go over.
Okay, so what's the process for that? They come to you and say, we're going to use it for something different, and then you notify us of that?
I don't know if there's, you know, I just can't think of a case right now that, oh, library, last year. Two people retired, so they had a personal services surplus of X amount, and did not use the funds in the other areas, so they surplus out at the bottom of, at the end of the year, and that surplus was returned back to the general fund. Other than the school department, I can't think of any other.
Well, I know the school department can move money from line to line without any process.
But we can look into that and-
Yeah, I just would like to know for sure.
If we have any retirements coming up, and potentially how that would affect.
Okay.
Now, do you mean town departments or a school department?
No.
Just town departments, right, so.
And it's not us against them, but?
No.
Our town departments, yeah.
Because the town department retirees.
Can I skip to H?
Sure.
Okay. Is there any way possible, because you said everything goes to free cash, is there any way possible that we can have, get a report that states how much each department returned back to free cash?
Yes, actually, we provide that every year.
Okay. All right, movie here.
Yep.
And the other thing is, I know that on the school department side, they used to, at one point, Terry Ola jars was providing monthly reports with regards to where the budget was and where their expenditures were and what the balances were. I know that can be very cumbersome to do it on a monthly basis. Is there any way possible that we could have it on a quarterly basis?
You could have it on a monthly basis.
You've got it right here.
Yeah, I start, yes.
And all of our departments, for the revolving funds.
Yeah, what I do for, especially starting this time of the year, is I do bi-weekly projections for every department. And now we're down to where we have it, where I prepare the projections based on my best knowledge of the department, provide it to the department, they review it, so we come to a better conclusion together. So I could do that monthly from now to the end of the year, because we're getting real tight now at the end of the year.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, perhaps even, I wouldn't say, I don't know, it's really at the pleasure of the board. I wouldn't mind it quarterly, monthly would be great, but quarterly would be absolutely fabulous.
Whatever you think is good, I'd do, we have it.
Okay.
So that took care of H.
Okay. Next item is, well, there's general budget discussion.
So, Mr. Chairman, put this on as a topic really, and follow up to several discussions with appropriations committee, and with respect to the last week's discussion, that the appropriations committee is seeking from the board, again, some kind of ranking of items across its departments of what would need to be restored above the 1% budget. So the board has seen all of the departments, what things that would be cut, and now what appropriations is asking the board to do is to provide some kind of a listing, an order of what the priorities would be.
For putting stuff back.
For putting stuff back. So what I would suggest is that the board consider a list that I could work with Tom on, to take a look at what those budgets are, what's being cut from all of the budgets, and try and put them in as a ranking. So, for example, in the Board of Selectment's office, we have cut to seminars. And so that would be, you know, item whatever on the list, and then you would measure that against-
Closing the offices on Friday.
Closing the offices on Friday, right.
Losing Blackboard Connect.
Right, or losing Blackboard, right.
Right.
That would be a suggestion that I'd make to the board, so that you could work on that process, or if there's some other way that the board wants to go about doing it.
Now, you realize, and I've said this before, I have to get this out there, other than, like, the glaring ones, like Blackboard Connect, it's, other than that, in my opinion, it's like choosing your favorite child, because you've got all those different departments, and you're not going to, you know, somebody's going to be unhappy and somebody's going to be happy, and so it's, I've done this, we did this a few years ago. Did we do it last year?
Yes, and when we had to prioritize, yes, and it wasn't pretty, because whoever ends up at the bottom feels as if they're not appreciated, and it's a very, it was uncomfortable.
It's a tough, you know, it's a tough thing, you know, you may, one suggestion, maybe you want to, maybe look at, who did you help last year, you know, and who can you help this year?
I think it's the importance, I mean, we can't be closing ten offices at four o'clock, so.
Or pick a couple of top items, and then take the rest, take the rest and list them and ask them to prioritize them, since the other ones are looking for it, so anyways.
Good luck on that one.
Yeah. Okay.
I would suggest that I'd like to, I don't know that I could get something to the board to look at for the next meeting, but maybe for the 18th.
Yeah, that would be great, if you could-
Okay. Work on that.
That'd be great.
And the next, actually, last item under time, I believe, is the consideration of another budget meeting with the department heads.
I, Mr. Chairman, I put that under there as well. It was really just a thought that came to me that perhaps the board has questions, the board wants to try and get closer to that, maybe the board wants to discuss the priorities, et cetera.
So I think, I'm sorry, through the chairman.
Yep.
If we can get our list, and I know in my head I can think of some of the things that they wanted to put back, but if you can get those to us, and we can maybe in our own minds decide, if we, as a board, come together and say, you know, we all agree that these are the top five things, then there may not be a need to have a meeting, but rather. Well, I do have some questions, so I don't think it would be a bad idea to have some of the department heads in. Through the chair?
Mm-hmm.
With regards to upgrades, and I know that there were some upgrades that were placed in the budget that we haven't necessarily approved, and there were some positions that were added that we haven't necessarily approved, how does that work for next year?
Well, I think there's two components, the money.
Mm-hmm.
So if you're bringing the budget to town meeting, and it includes a proposed departmental increase because of a regrade or something, then, you know, I guess you decide to move that to town meeting or not.
Mm-hmm.
If it gets moved to town meeting, then the next step would be the department head would submit the request to you for that regrade, and then whether it goes from there forward is up to you.
Okay.
I'm going to leave that alone for just a minute.
And I think with some of the department heads, as far as potential increases, I think they built them into the budget as it is, so, if I, I know of one or two, so.
I think there's a few, I don't-
I can tell you-
And those are budgets that stay in the 1%, so. I mean, they're stated very clearly in the budget document and the narrative, what they're trying to accomplish.
Right. Okay. I'm trying to think of, well, okay, nevermind.
Yeah.
All right.
I think it's worth a discussion, though.
Okay.
So you can, you know, I can send you that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I think that's it. Unless you get something.
Just one other thing is the building, the proposed new municipal, if I could maybe get together with you and try to break out some analysis and potential income from existing leases, like-
Yeah, we got, I assume we got that information with the RFP.
I haven't seen it yet.
Okay. Yeah, I haven't seen it either, so.
So, yeah.
Nick, if you can get those to Tom and I, we can take a look at them and see what, yeah, because that's what I was thinking was, my thought process is, well, obviously, not to give things away, but there's one, one of the buildings obviously has tenants, 67% of it is rented right now. The downside being 67% of it's rented right now, the upside being there's rental income there to offset any debt service we would have for the next two or three years to at least, you know, for a bad con to get our foot in the door.
Right.
So, you know, if we can do that, then it'd be great, and if we can see, if we can see the cost savings by showing the rental income for a time being, then, you know, it might make everything more palatable, because obviously, we're trying to do something in an economy that's lousy, and with tax rates going up, and with other things coming to the table, so we want to, once again, you want to do what's best, but you want to do it within some sort of guidelines to keep everything, you know, not overwhelming, so. All right. So, yeah, once-
Mr. Chairman, I just report for you and for Selectman Bransky that the RFPs are tentative, if you want to take them with you this evening.
Sure, that'd be great.
And I would say to the account that I have an office copy of each of the proposals that you want to come and take a look at.
Great, and we'll get together and go over and see.
Yeah, I can crank the numbers.
Yep, great, yeah, sounds good.
Great.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, feel better.
Feel better.
Yep, thank you.
We're only running eight minutes, seven, eight minutes late. Our next, our next appointment, I believe, is our new, our new barristers. Is that Leila Taylor and Kevin Sullivan?
Yes.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
I realize I have to make sure to fill these. But I don't need, didn't work well with Jake, but we get to make fun of his hometown, or his town of Florence that he lives in, so.
Well, we got two of you guys.
There you go. How are you?
There you go.
Welcome. So just to give a brief overview, our town labor attorney left your firm, so we folks have been, I don't know how that works, I don't know who draws the short straw, but you folks have ended up in front of us, so.
Not a short straw by any means, we're very happy to be here.
Welcome. So I don't know if you'd like to give us, you know, a brief, little biography?
Sure.
Yeah?
So my name is Leila Taylor, you know that already. I'm one of the partners at Sullivan Hayes and Quinn, I've been there for, well, as an attorney, a little over a decade, although I started my career there as a law clerk as well.
Wow.
So I've been there, at least my legal career started there. And we represent, I think you know about our firm, we represent many towns and municipalities throughout Massachusetts, especially in the western Massachusetts area, involved in a lot of collective bargaining, a lot of just labor and employment law issues that really impact public sector clients. I know that some of the issues that you have, we have experience with too, things like municipal healthcare reform, those kinds of things. So I don't think there's anything that's a surprise, but I personally am from Sunderland, so, and work in Springfield, which is where our office is, and I'll let Kevin talk a little bit about himself as well.
And I am new to the firm, I've only been with them for six months, but I've been practicing law in downtown Springfield and Westfield for about 22 years. So some of the stuff's new to me, I defer to the partners, and obviously, if there's a question Nick or someone asks, that I don't know, I have the resources down the hall to get you an answer. I'm on the school committee over in Westfield, have been for seven years, I got a brother who's been on the city council for 18, and my other brother was mayor for 14, so I'm pretty familiar with municipal politics, as well as the dealings with-
Does that mean you have a brother on the radio?
I do have a brother on the radio, my younger brother, he's the last one, by the way.
I think he is doing well, by the way.
He is doing well, thank you, yes, he has got a clean bill of health, so we're all very happy about that, so. So it's been some new challenges, I didn't do a lot of municipal law coming in, but I'm looking forward to it, and every day's something different, so I'm sure-
Great, well, welcome. We look forward to working with you. As we have stated here, there, we have some matters on our town council agenda, but there may be an executive session, so if you guys don't mind hanging around for a few minutes.
Not a problem.
Okay, great.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have the approval of, I'd like to make a motion to approve the open session minutes of November 26, 2013.
Some.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to make a motion to approve the open session minutes of December 11, 2013.
Some. Oops, I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're catching up, Nick, we're into this number. I'd like to make a motion to approve the executive session minutes of November 26, 2013.
So move.
It's either both of you or neither of you.
I thought you just did it.
No, executive session.
You did open session.
I did, no, I did the two open sessions.
Oh, Jesus.
So moved for November twenty-second.
There you go.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and last but not least, the, make a motion to approve the executive session minutes of December eleventh, two thousand thirteen.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Under old business, the annual town meeting, the deadline for petition warrant articles is March third, which is this Monday.
Yep.
Is it four P.M.?
Yes, we close the business on the third, just to, by way of explanation, the deadline, March first, by the bylaws, on a Saturday, and speaking with the clerk, the second, who confirmed with the secretary of state, moderator, town council, anyway, it's better to provide the public with that extra day rather than short.
Right, okay, great. And the, the department warrant article deadline is proposed to be March fourteenth.
That's a, per a conversation that I've had with the chairman. Typically, the board of selectmen has allowed for departments and boards and commissions to submit warrant articles past the March first date.
Okay.
And March fourteenth is a date that is the Friday before the next board of selectmen's meeting, and typically, the board would consider closing the warrant on that meeting of the eighteenth or, or thereabouts, just to give you an idea of the timeframe.
Okay.
So if that's okay with the board, I could at least notify departments if that's the case, or if there's other directing from the board.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept March fourteenth as the deadline for department warrant articles to be submitted.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Thanks.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
The next item is the board of selectmen warrant articles, which.
I submitted to the board just a, a very preliminary draft warrant with several different kinds of articles and different notes on there. I don't, I don't expect, you know, with the first read, to have too many decisions from the board, but I would ask that the board to take a look at those, and if there's any comments definitely at the moment, to let me know, but it's time really now to start thinking about what the board would like individually as a full board to put on their, on the warrant.
Okay, very good.
So if you could do that, I'd like to bring that up as a carryover item for the next, you know, for, ongoing.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you, Nick.
If I could make one other comment, the process of the warrant, it gets closed at some point by the board of selectmen. Also, there's a consideration, I think it's coming up on a possible special town meeting. Once the warrant is closed, typically, the only changes that are considered by the board of selectmen would be those that would change numbers within the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Not that it changes much else. So if you have a warrant article with a number in there, for example, highway funds, annual warrant article, the number we have in there is a placeholder, if we get a brand-new number that's solid, final before the publication, that's the number that's gonna go in there.
Right.
Same thing with any particular line item on the budget, as you go through the process with the appropriations committee.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next item, and Mr. Donahue, we could, can we, we get your input on this, 'cause we've brought this up before, and we have, how are you?
Good.
We tried to lock you out, but.
You have your voice back?
I do, but I use it periodically.
Oh, okay.
One thing, and we just wanted to ask you this question, when we were discussing with our town accountant, we were discussing the council on aging revolving fund, and the fact that every year, we go to town meeting and we get approval to spend a hundred thousand dollars. Last few years, it's gone over. This year, what he wants to do is add, in effect, an extra twenty thousand dollars to that hundred thousand for fiscal year that we're in right now. Can we?
Appropriate.
Well, I mean, the money's there, the money's there to spend, it's just the fact that by law, we're limited to what we, you know, what we've had in the, in the warrant.
I believe the increase, I believe the statute, I haven't looked at it specifically, but I do have for another issue that was here, but I believe the statute allows the amount that's approved for expenditure at town meeting to be increased by a vote, a joint vote of the board of selectmen and the appropriations committee. I could check the statute and get back, I have it here.
That would make things easy.
Yeah, 'cause what we were thinking was, we, we wouldn't, you couldn't vote on that in this regular town meeting, because everything was, I thought was, all the votes for the regular town meeting are for the upcoming fiscal year, starting July first.
Not necessarily.
Okay.
You could appro, you can put articles in to appropriate money from the current fiscal year for other purposes.
Okay.
But it primarily is the next fiscal year's town meeting, but you can.
Okay, so if you could, but if you could find out about that, you don't have to do it right this second, but, you know.
If you give me, give me two minutes, I'll give you the answer.
Okay.
'Cause I do have the, the act.
Because we're just looking up on something else with the rest of our holdings.
Okay.
Do you want to read something?
Hmm? Read some?
In any fiscal year, the limit on the amount may, that may be spent, maybe, the revolving fund may be, may be increased with the approval in a town with board of selectmen and a finance committee.
Okay, so we can do it.
We did it once before, a few years back, as I remember with the process.
Okay, good, and that's what we'll do?
Makes it easier.
Yeah, and then for this year, for going forward, we'll get the corrected amount for the request at town meeting, so that we don't have to do this again.
Well, it.
And even if we do, and we know the process now.
You know, the, the reason that the, the, that provision is in the, is in the act is that you anticipate what the revolving fund is gonna, is gonna be, I mean, the expenditures may be more because you have more people participating in those events, so you have to spend more, but recognizing that with the town, form of government, it takes, it's much more cumbersome to get an appropriation approval, which you have to call at a town meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item is the Fourth of July Parade. And I assume this is about the.
Chairman, if I could just back up maybe to a discussion, potential special town meeting? Or is the board?
You just talked, you just spoke to that.
So that would be?
That was, that was.
Take it right off.
Right, right, yeah, the purpose of it was for the council on aging, so we don't have to do that anymore, from what I understand, so.
Right.
Right, okay. The next item is the Fourth of July Parade, which unfortunately, you know, obviously, the Fourth of July Parade has been, has been something that the town has been proud of for, for years, and unfortunately, the, the powers that be have been running the parade for a long time have, have or are in the process of stepping down. We've had an attempt to, for the town to get the parade up and running and hopefully continue in the future, we've had people step up to the plate, RIT director Ryan Quimby has decided, in, in his spare time, is going to take over as chairman of the parade.
Really?
Yes, and we have, our Rotary Club, the East Long Meadow Rotary Club, is going to be involved, we're, we're going to be handling certain aspects of it. I'm not gonna take over the parade completely, but we're gradually filling in the spaces of the needed people, I, I somehow ended up volunteering to be treasurer of that organization, starting.
Did you miss a meeting?
Yeah, there you go. As soon as the existing treasurer is, is moving up the ladder in the Shriners, and he's gonna be traveling around the country as, as part of that, so he will, I pleaded with him to keep the checkbook till April sixteenth, which he agreed to do, so. So anyways, we're gradually filling the spots, and we're, we're gonna get the parade off this year, and then from there, you know, we're gonna, with the help of some, with the help of concerned townspeople, I believe we're gonna make it a go for, for the future. So just as an update, and, and now, and definitely at the, at the town meeting, I want to, I wanna thank the person who's been running this parade for twenty years, Carl Olin, and his staff of, I believe it's ten people on the, on the committee that he has, and they've, the, words can't express the job that they've done, 'cause this is a tremendous undertaking, and they've all given their heart and soul to this parade, and you can tell by how successful it is that they've done that, so I wanna give them thanks now, and I'm gonna also, I'm also planning on doing that, I shouldn't say this, but at the town meeting, I've got a few things to say about that also, so. Next item is a stop sign request on the corner of Mountain View and East Village.
Okay, I think that was the immediate.
Okay.
Do you have some more information?
I thought, thought there might be something.
I know that that's been referred to our safety officer, and he's looking for input with regards, there are certain things that need to, criteria that need to be met for him to put a stop sign here, and he's looking into that.
Thank you, and the next item is the, I'm sorry, I can't, no, I need to laugh.
Say it three times fast.
With the charter annual complaint slash outage report for two thousand thirteen, and it seems like every year we have, do we have the meeting, we haven't scheduled a complaint session, if you will, for charter, have we?
Yeah.
I think Selectmen Board has information on that.
Oh, is, okay, okay, good.
You want the date now?
If you've, if you've got it.
Oh, sure, that, that's gonna be on March, that'll be on Wednesday, March nineteenth, at seven o'clock at the Council of Aging Building.
Okay.
Right here where we are.
Okay, one thing.
That's the first, probably.
Yeah, and one thing is, every year, I get people making various comments about our cable company, good, bad, or indifferent, but then when we have the meeting.
Meeting.
Nine people show up, so if you have concerns, if you'd like to see improvement, please be part of the process and show up at the meeting, and so, you know, that's all I'll say on that matter.
Okay.
Under new business, we have a change in a DBA from John Corporation DBA, Nadeem's Mediterranean Restaurant Grill, to, I believe it's John Corporation DBA, Nadeem's Fish and Grill, Nadeem Kashu owner, Sixty Shaker Road. Do we have to vote on the approval of that?
Yes.
Even though it's, okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the change in DBA for the aforementioned restaurant.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, so I got around saying the twelfth.
You did.
Yeah, you did.
And we have a request from the East Long Meadow Unico Club for a one-day liquor license, beer or wine, on Friday, March fourteenth, from seven P.M. to ten P.M. at St. Luke's Church, four hundred Prospect Street, in conjunction with their porcetta dinner to benefit local scholarships, and their insurance is on file. I'd like to make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for that date for the Unico Club.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And we have a request from St. Michael's Life Commission for a few things. The first thing is a one-day liquor license, all alcohol, on Saturday, March eighth, two thousand fourteen, from six P.M. to eleven P.M. at St. Michael's Community Center, and this is an event to raise funds for charitable work, and they also have insurance on file. Is there, I'd like to make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And could we, I promised you to put in the motion to waive the fees for the, because they're in theory non-profit.
Have that included part of the motion?
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry, it is here. Never mind. The second item is, I'd like to make, make a motion to approve an entertainment license for that same event.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And surprisingly enough, I'd like to make a motion to request to waive the fees for that event.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And we have a request from Graziano Gardens for their seventh annual garden party, which must mean it's almost spring. I'd like to make a motion to, A, approve the garden party itself.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And to approve a temporary food service permit on Saturday, March twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, from ten, eleven A.M. to three P.M.
So moved.
For, and a temporary food service application is approved by the acting health agent, and there's recommendations from police and fire already on file. So has been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Right, aye.
And then last but not least, there's updates and follow-ups, so it looks like it's.
I think we have kind of done those.
Okay, great.
Oh, one, just, the salaries, have they been posted? Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I have not received them yet, they have not yet been posted.
Okay, not yet?
No.
Okay.
All right. Board of Health?
Okay, there was one, the, the issue with regards to whether, or does that go to town council, with whether or not the funds can be taken out of a revolving fund, whether or not the personnel salaries can be taken out of a revolving fund, does that, can that, does that go now, or would that go later on? That was one of my, that was one of the questions that I had.
Goes under the updates and the follow-ups topic?
Follow-up. But we can wait.
Well, I think it would be under.
To council, town council?
Item thirty, thirty B.
Okay, great. All right, moving on to Board of Health, sorry about that.
That's okay.
MRC capacity grant, I do believe we have someone who's gonna step up.
We have a special guest?
We do have a special guest.
How you doing?
How are you?
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Oh, I didn't get up and shake hands, sorry.
That's okay.
We'll do it air five.
What up?
Okay.
Good news.
So you've been in receipt of the building capacity, the grant application, and so, as you know, every year it's our responsibility to apply for this grant, and we use this grant in order to run the MRC. The MRC is strictly run on this particular grant, and we have received word that we have been awarded the grant, but now we have to go through the actual paper process of setting up a budget and then putting it into motion and getting it over to NACHO, N-A-C-C-H-O. The grant, as you know, the physical grant goes to Angela, Angela reads through it.
Because of the Board of Health?
Because of the Board of Health, and then she approves it, and then we come back to the three of you to get final approval. So as set on, the grant is for thirty-five hundred, did you get a breakdown of the short budget list?
No.
I did not see that.
You didn't?
I believe that the full grant was provided.
I, I asked for a copy of it, so.
Let me double check.
So I can, I can go over that pretty fast, so you'll have it on record. Salary for the coordinator would be twelve hundred, brochures, one fifty, business cards, one hundred, rack cards, two hundred, field bags for the team, a thousand dollars, that Field bags for the team, $1,000, that would be 10 bags at $100 each. Hazmat supplies that were lost in the move, $150. Tip booklets for first responders, something that we would give to each member of our team in order to put in their field bags, $350. And then some training and exercises, smart triage, $175, that would cover handouts as well as the person doing the training, and then understanding and recognizing psychological trauma, $25. And lastly, two newspaper advertisements at 75 each, hopefully, for a total of 150, and that would give you your grand total of $3,500.
Okay.
By the way, this is Carleen, she's, she's our unit coordinator here in town, she does an excellent job.
She sure does.
And so she wanted, she wanted, she knew that it was coming up, and I just didn't feel right signing the paperwork without having it presented here to everyone first. And so when she, when I mentioned to her that I had gotten it and that it was on the agenda, she volunteered to come right in, rather quickly, I might say. And so...
Very nice. Well, you do a great job. Every time we see you, we have an opportunity to tell you thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
We do appreciate it.
And so with the board's permission, I will sign it, we're in agreement, and we'll get it back there so she can get to doing what she needs to do.
Okay, that would be great.
At this moment, I'll entertain a motion for, for permission to sign the MRC capacity building award contract.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any deliberation or any conversation about this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so we'll sign that, and they'll make copies, and you can pick it up at the office.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Before I go, I wanted to let you know of some upcoming events real quick, just so you'll have that under your hats. So on March 6th, there will be a HAM, H-A-M, believe it or not, radio operating seminar that will be held over in Westfield, and it's sponsored by the Westfield MRC. On March 26th, there is the Western Mass Summit of Community Organizations Active in Disasters, also known as COAD, and that will be from 8:30 until 4 o'clock at the Clarion Hotel in North Hampton. On April 5th, we will have another Train-a-thon to be held at STCC, for those of you who didn't make the last run, and that will be sponsored by the Springfield MRC. On April 12th, there will be a MRC sheltering exercise, and that is looking to be a pretty interesting day. They're going to go through from start to finish how to set up and take down a shelter, and then everything else in between. And that's going to be sponsored by the Wilberham MRC. And then lastly, on sometime in May, I don't have a specific date, there will be another Train-a-thon coming up. And continuing from our last conversation, they are still accepting certificates for the Serve Safe Food Handler. The Greater Westfield MRC received a grant specifically for this topic, and anybody who is a member of the MRC can go online, they can take the course, get their certificate, and if they email it to the Westfield MRC by May 31st, they will receive a reimbursement for that course.
Okay. Now, just for people who are viewing, are there any charges that are associated with any of these seminars or the Train-a-thons?
All the seminars and Train-a-thons are free of charge.
That's what we wanted to hear.
Yeah.
Okay, just a conservative question. Thank you so much for coming in today. We do appreciate everything that you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do for our town.
Great, have a good night.
Thank you, you too. Okay, that was great news. This isn't necessarily bad, but our health nurse did resign, and we still are covered by our contingency plan. And then the grant award notice came in through Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Do you want to talk a little bit about that, Nick? I see where Josh sent us that notice.
Sure. So the board is just advised that the grant for the shared public health nursing not only is continuing, it's been awarded for a second year, it's expanded, and significantly so, I believe the amount is 110,000 for this year. And expanded services, including outreach and health assessments, community-wide health assessments, and so forth. So there hasn't been, to my knowledge, a recent meeting of the steering committee, but I believe that there, you know, there will be to talk about now how to implement those goals that were part of the grant process, grant of renewal application.
Expanded, mhm. Also, she was talking, the shared nurse, Angela, what's her, Angela?
Kramer.
Kramer. She's going to possibly do some community educational things with Don Mackey, so she'll be calling you, just so you're aware of that. Moving on to the Republican Service Community Participation Funds, there were some funds available for, for some, for some scholarships that we haven't yet awarded. And so the question was, we had talked about awarding, there was a surplus, so we talked about making sure that there was enough money in there for our next...
Hazardous waste.
Hazardous waste day, thank you. And also, we would have $1,000 for scholarships. Nick was kind enough to speak with the people over at the high school. There is a program where students go for a week and learn about the legislative process, and it's very effective. The Union American Legion sponsors two children, and they would like to send two sets, two girls and two boys. So if we were to use $500 of that, we would be able to send the second set. It actually turns out to be $250 per, per student. So with the board's approval, if we were willing to do that, we could do that. Also, there, the community service, it's, the grant is supposed to be for community service, there is a grant that Mark Macarini will write up, so that that could be granted at the award ceremony for an additional $500 for one of the students, as well as, we all participated in the senior projects, okay? Do you remember when we all did that? There was a, there was a need for an additional scholarship for the best senior project, but that wouldn't be delivered until May, so we have more time to get that situated. The scholarships and the, the selection of the people who are going to receive the scholarships needs to be completed, and the process needs to be completed no later than April 1st, so that the names can get back to Terry Hallier. I did meet with Mark Macarini today, and he will be forwarding all of that information to us, and so he's pretty much going to take care of it with the board's permission, you know, you'd have to vote on that. There is more, I don't know if, there is a discrepancy on how much they actually, how much is actually in the fund, and it's, they think we have more than what we think they have. So that's a good thing. But, so what was the amount that we thought, thought it was, Nick?
Well, the number that I presented to the board at the last meeting was something like six or $8,000, something in that neighborhood. And in speaking with Mr. Stanis at Republic Services, he is, he's saying that his financial people are telling him that the number's really projected out to be more in the neighborhood of $21,500. And that's over the course of...
That's a good problem to have.
Over, yeah, over the course of the next, you know, through June 30th of 15, and that's based on $7,500 per year commitment. I, again, the board has an email there where Mr. Stanis says, let's agree that the number is $21,500, and this email firms it up. I haven't had that final phone call, or I don't know if I really need to, but at any rate, they are, the point that Republic Services wants to make is that this is for community participation and for, to, it's their corporate philosophy. So my suggestion to the board would be that it consider what it might want to do going forward, including the scholarships, of course, and also maybe to reserve some funding for hazardous waste day to pay for that in the fall. And then maybe think of other ideas for the rest of the calendar year, and then roughly the other half of it, if you will, for the last six months of the contract. That would be Republic's request, is that you try and space it out a little bit, but that's the number we're working with right now.
If I may ask, through the chair, so this means we roughly have $21,500. If, to fund the program you're talking about with the $500, to fund scholarships, I would think, this year and next year, you know, and then also to fund a hazardous waste day in the fall, as far as, and then obviously, the hazardous waste day, if I remember correctly, is around $2,500?
Well, last year was significantly lower, but I would suggest maybe $3,000 based on averages.
Because I'm just trying to get an idea of what we could do, you know, it sounds like we could do some fairly decent scholarships if we put our minds to it, you know, so...
But this would just be a start of the $315, $3,500 ones.
Right, right. Because I know in the past, with the Green Committee, what do we give, we have $3,000, right?
Yes, it was a total of $3,000.
Okay, all right.
So I will entertain a motion to move forward with those, those three small ones that were described earlier.
So moved.
And, and is there a second?
Second.
Is there any deliberation? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes, so I'll let them know. And as soon as I get the, the details of it, I'll forward it. And we, one of the things that he did speak of was a two-minute video, and so we would watch the videos on what they have done for community service and choose a person. Okay? Notification, Nick, you want that one? DEP rebate for recycling participation?
Just notifying the board that for that period of July of 2013 through December, town's recycling revenue, participation was $17,717. So congratulations to the town on the recycling efforts.
Very impressive. Amen. Okay, the next one is that we need to certify that there have been no complaints with regards to the WF Young Incorporated. Do I need to read this into record, or is it okay? Okay. So I'm asking, have any of my fellow board members received any complaints with regards to WF Young Incorporated?
Nope.
With regards to any misuse of US FDA and US EPA manufacturing?
No.
Okay, so then I would, do we need a vote on this, or do we just go ahead and sign and send it out?
The board has conducted business either way.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to, to sign that we've had no complaints from WF Young Incorporated, located on 302 Benton Drive in East Long Meadow, Massachusetts.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any conversation? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. The next one is similar. It has to do with the Absorbing Pro CMC and Absorbing Butane Less Equine American Shoulder Friends that are listed. Have you had any complaints with regards to them?
No.
No.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to sign stating that there have been no complaints with regards to the previous mention.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any conversation? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that passes. Okay, the next thing is the mosquitoes, it's mosquito spraying time, we're looking for quotations, quotes?
Yes, yep. So just the annual process of looking for those quotations, and those were sent out to vendors that have customarily provided that type of service, and also posted to the town website. I'm hoping to, well, the request is to receive bids back by Friday, and I expect that I'll have an award recommendation for the board at a meeting on the 4th. Hopefully, it's a sign of spring.
Yeah, both good and bad.
I'd rather have Graziano Gardens thing be the sign of it, and the mosquitoes would be beside the point.
And that includes a second spraying, too, if we need to have one.
That's right.
We, I don't remember, we didn't have to do a second one last year.
No, the, the only time that I can recall is, I think it was 2006 or '07, and things were particularly bad, and there were, there were parts of the state that were doing second sprays at that time, so...
All right. Did you knock on wood there? Were you knocking on wood?
No, I just wanted to see if it was wood.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
But we digress.
We do, we do. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the approval for all of the food service licenses renewal from FY14 to FY15. There will be a, a letter that will be accompanying the, the licenses renewals, introducing our health agent, because many people haven't been exposed, it seems like it's a new thing for folks, so this way, hopefully, it'll be a little bit less resistant for her. So what I also, you know, we do have, she has been our temporary agent. At this point, I wish, if there are no complaints, and if it is the board's pleasure, I'd like to make her our, no longer our temporary, our regular health agent.
I think she does a fabulous job.
I think she has been doing a fabulous job, and I think we'll be looking, and I'd hate to start all over again at this point. So with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to accept, remove the temporary from her title to make her our health agent.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any conversation? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now passes, okay, so we're done. That letter will go out, and so we'll change the head on that. New catering services for Amara, how did I get so much tonight? Amara at Newell Rubbermaid.
Aramark.
Thank you. Aramark, I've never heard of them.
Well, they do almost, all the colleges, yeah, they're huge.
Big, big catering company.
Okay, all right, well, I'll, I'll try to do better, I'll try to get out there to get to know them. I apologize for the butchering. This is a food, a food, a retail food establishment permit, I'll entertain a motion to accept that.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any conversation? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also, for the same company, there's a food establishment permit for, for, for service.
So moved.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Milk, can, can we do these all at once, or do we have to do them individually?
Yep. The board has never adopted, at least during my time working for the board, a consent agenda.
Okay.
But that is something that the board might consider, and I would defer with town council, it's not something that I've spoken with him about, but I know that that is an option for the board to consider for things like this and for other sort of routine matters where they could be lumped in for a board approval. And if any member had an objection or a question, a particular request could be taken out of that consent vote.
Right, and I think that's something we should vote.
I think we should look into that. I, I, I'm not going to move it now, but can we look into that for the future meetings? Because I don't want to put anybody on the spot here. Okay, so milk and ice cream, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any conversation? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also, there is a permit for a common vitular license, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any conversation? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And so that passes. And all of these were approved by our acting health agent. And that is it for me.
Okay. Under correspondence, we have a letter from the residents of Brownstone Gardens regarding the animal control officer, and I believe, Nick, there were a couple items, they had somehow, someone deposited 10 ducks in their pond, and the ducks weren't going to be able to survive on their own, so Tom O'Connor took them somewhere or did something with them, and I got so many comments I'm not going to make, but anyways, but he did take care of them, and they were very happy about his professionalism and, and what he did for them, and now I guess they have a fisher cat in the area that they're also going to have him do something about.
Yeah.
Because those are not fun.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add, too, and I failed to send it to the board in time for the meeting, but there's a, an item that I'm going to share with you that was brought to my attention about Mr. O'Connor's efforts being featured in a newsletter that is pro waterfall, I guess is what I got out of it.
Pro waterfall?
Ducks and so forth, they're very, you know, in favor of wildlife and waterfall and so forth, but he was giving waterfall.
A waterfall.
I thought you said waterfall, too, and I didn't quite get the connection, okay, now I got it, waterfall.
So I'll send that along to you.
Oh, that would be great.
Thanks.
It's always nice to hear when somebody's doing, when, when our employees are doing great work, and they do.
Our next item is notification from the council on aging director regarding March for Meals campaign, and I guess March is the month when they try to highlight the, the Meals on Wheels and associated services, and I can say that last year at this time, I was fortunate enough to go out on the road with one of the Meals on Wheels deliverers, and it was quite an experience, it was, you know, you don't, you don't think in your everyday life of people needing someone to come and give them a meal necessarily, but when you go out there and you see the people that are involved and the people that they serve, it's, it's, it's a wonderful service, and it's, you know, A, it's heartwarming, and B, it's, it's really nice to see that, that the council on aging through this process can, can touch so many lives.
I agree.
All right, so now, we'll save town council. On the meeting invitations and reminders, our next board of selectmen meeting is Tuesday, March 4th at 9:00 a.m. in the town hall hearing room.
Yep, it's 9:00 a.m.
Yeah. And a board of selectmen meeting after that is Tuesday, March 18th, at that regular time, 6:00 p.m. in the town hall hearing room. And charter negotiation, see, if I'd waited, I would have known this, is the first public forum is Wednesday, March 19th.
That's okay.
At 7:00 p.m. in the council on aging media room at 238 North Main Street. Now, last but not least, town council.
Thank you.
How are you again?
Good to see you.
Long time, it's like 10 minutes, I suppose. All right, we have a number of items tonight, or maybe it just seems like a number of items.
Looking at the agenda, I would anticipate, based on what I know of the items, that item 30, 34, 35, 37, and 38 would be executive. And 34, 35, 37, and 38 would be executive for the purposes of discussion, attorney-client privilege matters with counsel, and 34 would be non-union contract negotiations.
Okay, all right. Keep that in mind when I have to call that one, go on executive. All right, let's start with the transferring of the license, which I believe the last time we had a problem with, because you can't just transfer corporate to a corporate, or change the corporate entity.
Well, the last time, the request was to change the name.
Of the corporation.
It was a name change, but what in fact was happening is the transfer was from an LLC to another LLC. So it was really a transfer of ownership of the license, and the agenda was incorrect. This time, I believe it's a request for transfer from an LLC to an LLC. This time, I believe, it's a request for transfer from an LLC to an LLC.
Correct, okay, so we can vote on it?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, this is the transferring of licenses from ZMQ Brothers LLC DBA C-Mark Number 2 to AA Khan LLC DBA C-Mark Number 2, 668 North Main Street, Abid Akhtar owner. I'd like to make, I'd like to request a motion to approve the retail food establishment permit.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And also, second, the milk and cream license.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And this, this was approved by our acting health inspector, who's now, I guess, not acting anymore.
She was acting then.
Yes. The next item is the letter from conservation, there's a letter from conservation regarding the donation of land on Ramona Way.
Correct, the letter was on the board's agenda last, at their last meeting. The Conservation Commission has since considered the matter. The letter indicates that they have voted to request the Board of Selectment to accept the donation of the land. Their letter indicates that upon notifying Mrs. Loftus, who is the owner, that she will be responsible to provide an appraisal of the property so that the taxes can be appropriately adjusted, she needs to prepare a sub, a non-subdivision plan to allow her home lot to be split from the land she wants to convey to the town. And then, they're saying she needs to prepare a deed, transferring the property to the town under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. I would suggest that in addition to that, the owner be required to submit, along with the paperwork, a title report or title opinion from her attorney indicating that she is in fact a legal owner of the property, and there are no encumbrances that are subject to the property, or other obligations that might be in place on the property. And also, somehow have prepared a statement, whether it's prepared by someone in the town or an outside agency, as to the historic use of the property, to indicate whether, based on historic use, there was any belief that there might be some type of 21E contamination or other hazardous material on the property. And if the historic history of use shows that there would be a concern, then the issue might be whether the board would require to have a 21E exam. If the historic report indicates that it's really been fallow land not used for anything other than just open space for the last 100 years, then there would probably be no need to go further with any type of investigation.
So it sounds like you should hold off on approving the donation until you get...
I think you could accept it, subject to receiving those items.
Okay.
A lot of work for someone to give us something, isn't it?
Yeah, well, I'd like to make a motion to approve the donation of the land on Ramona's Way by Ms. Loftus, with the caveat that all the, all the requests and paperwork that Attorney Donahue was just noted, is provided to the town and that were, to our satisfaction.
Receive that, you would receive all of that and be acceptable to the board before the board would vote to accept the land.
Okay.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The vehicle use policy, I believe in your packet, at least there was in mine, was a analysis done by the town administrator of the various provisions in department contracts with respect to the use of vehicles, so I believe you've had a chance to review that. I have received from Mr. O'Connor, the animal officer, a animal control officer, a copy of the language that his attorney had suggested be inserted in the existing employee use policy. I've reviewed it, I think it's excessive, and not in the best interest of the community to adopt such a comprehensive policy, and I'm looking for it in my notes, I know I made a copy for you guys, I'm not sure I can find it now.
Hmm.
Here it is. Here's the language that was proposed, that I received from the board, that was posed by his council. It gets into, in my opinion, too much of a policy of review, determination of whether there's responsibility or not, that's outside the control of the town, and just is going to become cumbersome to enforce if you ever want to enforce it. My suggestion, I haven't talked to Mr. O'Connor about it, nor do I think it's really my place to talk to him, I think it's up to the board to determine what you want to do. You have a policy in place, there was concerns about certain provisions of the language. I drafted, using that as a basis, modified policy to be used, and, as you may recall, Mr. O'Connor's issue and his council's issue was that the, the language that exists was imprecise with respect to what, what the employee was going to be responsible for. So, the language I've seen commute basically is that the employee shall be responsible, shall be required to reimburse the town for all property damage to town vehicles assigned to the employee, if the damage is the result of an intentional act or negligent act or omission by the employee, of the employee. The determination shall be, that should be made, I'm sorry. Shall be, it should be be, not me, should be made by the police department using standard investigation procedures. The employee may request the board to waive any reimbursement by filing a written request, setting forth the detail, in detail, the reasons for the request, provided the request is filed, the officer of the board of select within 10 calendar days from the date he receives notice of the results of the investigation. I think it, it addresses the concerns that Mr. O'Connor's attorney raised, but keeps it in-house as to who makes the investigation, who makes the determination of fault, and then gives the board the policy to, the ability to waive it if you find an employee can come in and give you facts that are sufficient to make you feel comfortable with it.
Okay.
Now, you have a policy in place, whether you want to amend the policy really is up to the board.
Mm-hmm, okay. Yeah, so we can make a motion to add this to the, to amend the policy for, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend the, the existing vehicle use policy to include the language that we've been presenting with tonight by the Town Council.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Item 29, the Covanta Agreement, I have received it from the administrator, I have not, I apologize, I have not had a chance to review it in detail, I'm on it, I'm not prepared enough to report whether I find it acceptable for the board to consider or not. So at your next meeting, I'll be able to report, I apologize.
You know our next meeting's at 9:00 in the morning, right?
Hmm?
You know our next meeting's at 9:00 in the morning, and...
Oh, your agenda said noon, didn't it?
Well, that was a typo.
Ah, see, I do know it was at 9:00.
Providing breakfast.
Yeah.
Oh, we are?
No.
Well, since I don't get up until 11:00, it's going to be a problem to get there by 9:00.
You're going to have your jammies on?
Continental, we can put the downer on.
There you go. That could be scary. Anyway, next item is T-Mobile site work notice.
Yeah, it's a notice from them that they, they want to upgrade their antenna and related equipment at the monopole at the fire, through the back of the fire station, which is permissible under the terms of their agreement that they can bring up, they're just notifying you that, so that we can coordinate the work and make sure that it doesn't interfere with any of the antenna or other operation material that we have at the site.
Okay.
I'm going to defer item 32 to the town administrator.
As I say, we just, we haven't gotten them yet, so that's probably tabled with.
Yes.
But I would just ask the board, as you're reviewing the proposals, to think in terms of what additional review or what process you might make. The RFP states that I would make a recommendation to the board, the board ultimately makes an award. I have, I believe at the opening of the proposals, I notified vendors that the board needs a little bit of time, of course, to take a look at things, and to realistically not necessarily expect word on this until, until after the meeting of the 18th. But if there are certain processes that the board wants to follow in evaluation, anything at all, I'd ask that you let me know, you know, maybe even at the next meeting if possible.
Okay. And next, oh, the Warren?
Yep, the Warren, the Warren article.
Well, we're, obviously, once we look at everything, we'll determine, you know, what...
The additional funding.
Right, well, I mean, we're going to need funding. They're not financing it for us, so, but well, what we have to look at is, we're going to need the funding, but we're also, there's, we have two bids, without getting into details, one is the existing one that we looked at, and in that case, because the other one's actually, can I say it's, it's a reconstruction type of thing? Or I actually, I just did, didn't I?
No, you can't.
So, but in any event, the existing building has, two floors are rented, so not only do we have to look for funding, but we have to figure out how much the town is going to be paying based on the fact that we're going to be, in theory, if we chose that building, collecting rents for, so we've got some accounting type things to do, you know, to figure out, so. But yes, we will have, if all goes well, we do want to have a placeholder for, for Warren.
Warren article?
Yeah, Warren article. Next item is, this is MetLife, they want to provide, why is this under legal?
I believe that, was council making a review, or was that a carryover from the last meeting?
Carryover from the last meeting.
And the council's advice was that the policy reviewed, it seemed fine.
I think the board position at the last meeting was this was a request, it was a benefit to the, to the employees, and it wasn't costing the town any, so I don't think they had any, it was optional with the employees, so the board had no real concern at that point with allowing them to make the proposal.
Mr. Chairman, I just, there wasn't clear if there was any carryover item discussion for it.
Is this something you have to vote on?
No.
Okay, that's what I recall. All right, and then under new business, the legal budget line items? I think that's the only item that's left for...
This, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to have an opportunity to report to the board, and this goes back to budget discussions, similar to the operations budget and the celebrations budget, that was being discussed earlier, where there will be a shifting, a proposed shifting, at least, from, you know, to a different department of those budgets, or substantial amounts of those budgets. This, this is a proposal where the final legal budget that is submitted for FY 215, 2015, I don't anticipate will change for the overall amount, but that there may very well be a proposed shifting of some of, some of the funds from the other personal services line item, which goes to fund largely the labor council expense, but it also goes towards paying for litigation or other special projects that Town Council is involved with, and I just want to make the board aware that in looking at that, it seems there, it would be better practice in, as a request, also to make those expenses that are council's labor, not expense, not expenses copying and so forth, but that portion of it to go towards the stipend amount budget that is, council is paid for on a monthly basis, so that it better reflects what the actual costs are for his labor for, for the town.
And I believe there was no problem with appropriations in that regard?
No, I, the appropriation viewed it as a shift, and again, it's not something that's going to have an effect on the overall...
Right, right, okay.
Before you go into executive session, I do have one item, it's not in your agenda, I apologize. Board, some, some months ago, approved the, accepted a request for purchase of the Auburn Street property. I have been contacted by council for the successful bidder in that, looking to try to schedule a closing to purchase that property. So in response to that, I prepared a deed, and I'm asking, I would ask the board to consider signing it tonight, and I would hold a deed in escrow until we have a firm closing date. I anticipate closing either at the end of this week or sometime during next week on the property. You may recall, the sale price of the property is $26,600.
Okay, great.
Deed I have for...
Thanks. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session to deal with matters of non-union personnel contracts.
And for discussion of matters involving attorney-client privilege between the board and legal and labor counsel.
Okay, to return to open only to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Selecting Thorpe?
Yes.
Selecting Maransky?
Yes.
Selecting Federacy S.